Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. We've got a quorum here tonight for the board meeting. This is our November board meeting. Early because the two, and we had, we had published this so that we could have it early. Cause the Tuesday next week would not work for the phone. Uh, we'll start with approval of minutes. Did the minutes?
Everybody look at them and.
I've seen them.
Yep.
Motion.
I'm making motion that we approve the minutes as they are.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sending around the sign. Treasurers report and financial items.
Yeah, just for the purposes of reporting this, um, in October, our month's receipts were eight thousand seven hundred forty dollars and our disbursements were seventy six thousand, six hundred and ninety-two, and that is because we played the second half of the road. Um, a, right, the second half of the road paving project. And, um, so it's closed out now.
Yes.
It is, um, our ending ledger balance is now four hundred ninety-nine thousand, hundred and twenty dollars. And to answer your question, the CCMG closeout process did involve sending a lot of stuff. And so I, I actually had, was on the phone with Greg a couple of times this weekend. We finally found the right person to submit that to because you're supposed to be able to submit them online, but I couldn't figure out how to do it. Anyway, I, I sent them everything yesterday and I haven't gotten confirmation from her that she's received it all, but she just told me to mail an email or everything and I have, so she's perfect. As far as I know, we're done and closed out.
Vouchers.
Yes. All right. First one is Menards, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for one more timer.
Timer and a hose.
You know, I didn't think to ask you when, when we were talking about that, that hose, that water there is higher power.
And you shut it off right now. It's shut off for the season. So.
All right, um.
He didn't place trees this week. The dead trees are gone. Our hope and prayer is that we get some moisture through the winter time and these live. And then he'll start back up with the soaker hose in the spring as soon as he can.
So did the, did the utility company turn it off or did Gabe?
Gabe.
Okay.
He winterized. They winterize, they come through and winterize all the, the old golf.
You had to buy these again? I thought we were starting.
We don't have a warranty on these trees.
We've spent thousands. We could have bought them from Menards or Lowe's and gotten a one-year guarantee.
They don't have them now.
They've not now, but when we initially did this and I suggested that, everybody thought pre-ops would be better. And now we're on our third. They cost three times as much and no warranty.
Next spring.
Next spring if we have to replace them.
I would not, I would not go with this anymore.
That's for, um, table.
Yeah.
This is for Smith.
Trash.
Trash. There are two utility company invoices here. One, both of these are for irrigation. We have them less for, um, a half a month. They, they turned it off.
Is this, this one voucher? You're gonna pay them both with this? Okay.
And this one is for Taylor Minette. They, they got their last invoice to me just after we did the last meeting. So there's two months invoices there. And this is the last invoice for AMF Engineering.
And they did the.
Abe Lanza.
Dave, okay. They oversold a project, the street project.
Do they give us an itemized at all as to what these hours were for?
They never.
I've never seen one. And even with the redevelopment commission, I've never seen one.
Really? Cause every attorney bill I've ever seen, it's like they'll say, and they give like a brief synopsis as to what they did, like, you know, responded to emails, phone calls. I mean, do we, I mean, we don't really have any idea at all.
Just the work that we've asked him to do.
But is any of it done? Like, I know we haven't gotten our.
They build on an hourly basis. So if they spend an hour working on something, we can build for an hour.
Right. But we don't, I mean, so far we've got a lot of stuff that's not completed and yet.
Like what?
Don't, like, I thought we had the inter-local agreement. Has that been?
I actually have that today.
Okay. Well, I've never, I've never seen an illegal bill like this. It doesn't have any, like, you know, one point eight hours. What were they?
Why don't I go back and look at some older ones? Because I, I think they all look like that, but I'll go back and see if they were, if they were being more detailed before than.
We should, I personally think we should have a little more detail as to, particularly because we've got so many different projects. When it was, when it was just the zoning commission, I mean, pretty much that's all it was.
Yeah.
But now we've got them working on this, that, and the bike and the training.
Yeah.
I think it would behoove us to know what those things actually are costing us.
It's a fair question. Okay. And this one is for, did you do, did this, sorry, this is for the engineering.
I thought we had some money coming back from them, don't we? Wasn't this the streets?
We did. And then, and then they put in a little more time. I don't think they used, they used it.
They ended up, cause we had to have them come back out to help us negotiate with the road company.
So we ended up having to pay them twenty-five hundred dollars more?
The first bill wasn't the full amount.
Right, but.
So we.
What was the to, I thought the total was five thousand? Kate, we go with the.
And look at it, I'm gonna have to do that after the event.
Okay, I just, I feel like we don't have a real good grasp of how much a lot of these projects are costing us.
They don't look out of the realm. If I saw something that I thought was really a big, large number that was, I would say, I agree with you, we need to get more information on it. Nothing that I've seen screams to me, hey, they're taking advantage of us.
No, I just originally he had said that we would have money coming back even after we did that, at least when I spoke with them. Let alone.
Yeah, it says total amount not to exceed ten thousand, one hundred and sixty. So prior, prior bill was seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. And then this last bill was for two hundred and, or twenty-five hundred dollars. So total, total build was nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Right, but I've, we made a down payment or something. He originally had told me we were gonna get money back.
Yeah, we'd been, we, we made a down payment of seventy-three, sixty. Or the original bill, the first bill he paid was, was not the full amount. You haven't got anything from Setco then?
No, I was gonna ask about that.
I'll reach out again. Just remind him to send us something.
Where's something?
Here.
The next, the next thing was this contract, and I did not give it on the agenda here, but this contract from Pool Trucking.
Oh, for snow removals.
Snow removal. And he's got a rate and a, um, it says snow removal with, will be provided with one inch or more accumulation. Certificate of Insurance, we provide it on request. We should get that, yeah, agreement effective just starting December first. Were we gonna change that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we need to follow one inch.
Greater.
It's usually two.
Starts at two. We can tell him two inch. It's in the back. It's two inch.
Yeah, well, I thought that's what we texted about. Cause typically if we give snow.
Well, we got one inch last week.
Yeah, and then it melts, you know, within, you know, by the afternoon.
Yeah, I can.
It used to be three and then I think we dropped it down to two.
I think.
It gets, yeah, yeah.
Just change that to two inch. Are you okay to do it two inch?
Yeah, let's change that and sign it. And if, and we'll just make sure he notes that and that he's okay with that. If he wants us to issue a claim, well, I'll get here and let's sign it again. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of proofing this?
I, I would probably initial the change.
Okay.
Uh, status of payroll vendor engagement.
I finally got the withholding number this week, so I will be finishing getting that set up this week. It's, it's been, um.
Fun.
Yeah. But we're almost there.
Good, good. Well deserved.
Uh, budget approval for two thousand twenty-six.
Everybody get a copy of the seventeen eighty-two?
Yep.
Okay, so we're all good to go. Nothing changed. And I went ahead and sent back that that form. So I think we're all good on that.
Okay. Uh, status of ongoing or update on sewer test remediation activities?
I thought that I got a proposal from them. Remember I was telling you?
From the city?
Proposal. Um, it turns out.
There wasn't anything there.
Turns out their system was hacked and that's a fake, uh, message, phishing message.
Wondered about.
I had to clean off my system and run my virus protection and everything.
Oh, I just flicked on it tonight and it wasn't there. So now I have to do that too.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Yeah, it, it was a he apologized profusely for it, but no, he didn't have any proposal for us yet, but he did say he was still working with one or two residents. He, I think they had one or two people. They were still, still having a conversation with us. And then he'd said, and this was last month, but he said they were gonna be working in another area. I assumed that about all got done. I didn't hear any complaints about it or anything.
Um, says review of the heart survey. Is that the?
Yeah, so I must have inadvertently, I inadvertently deleted a bullet somewhere along the line there. Well, before we talk about Adam's proposal, we need to talk about the, the signage. Because his, one of his proposals of the survey is one.
This is the.
The survey proposal.
Yeah, the survey proposal.
Let's talk about that first.
So ba- basically what Adam sent us was a, was a list of things that he will bid. So he's put together the scope of work that he will bid. So what he's asking for us is to say, yes, that is the scope of work. Send him, sign it and send it back to him. Then he will put together a bid to say what the cost will be for him to, to, basically what he's gonna do is come out and do a layout of all of our infrastructure. Something we did, what, twenty-five years ago with, uh, John Rand's company. So he will basically update that with all of the.
Yes, he did. You might text her.
Here's some.
It's John Carter.
Hi, John.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry about that.
So that, the basically this is just a gauge of order that he's, he kind of like I said, laid out what we need to have done. And so if, I think he did that. So if we wanted to get more than one quote, we could send that off as a RFP.
But I don't think it's not, it's below the dollar amount, right?
There is no value on this. All it.
Right, but I mean, as far as needing to get more than one bid.
Right, it's below the dollar. I, I just want, I guess wanted to get approval that this is the scope of work we want to have done. As far as I'm concerned, it is. It matches up with everything that we need. And then he will take this back and he will draw up a proposal based on that, those hours of service that he thinks it will take. And then give us a quote. So this isn't costing us anything. All it is, is agreeing that yes, this is the scope of work that we want.
Right.
Well, I have this, since it has a quote of some sort.
It's got numbers of what.
From the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Oh, then that must be different.
Does it have a total or just hour?
Topographic infrastructure survey, fifteen thousand dollars. Alternate private utility located four thousand.
No, not what I was looking at. Okay. So he did give us one with it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we sent back the approval then.
I think we did that last month.
Okay. Okay. So this is the total.
Well, let's, let's scan through that and.
Sorry about that. I was looking at what I had that he sent originally. I did not see this one.
This did come to all of us, cause I.
I have something that was sent the twenty-fourth and then just another.
Did it come to you or did it come to?
I think he sent it to all of us.
Okay, yeah.
Bunch of emails.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be about twenty thousand, what it looks like. Yeah.
Do we have this budgeted?
We did put some, um, some money in for sewer repairs. Remember we went into three categories? For next year, not for this year.
So yeah, this would be for next year. So.
Oh, I see. This one from the thirty-first is for hunch list and inspection on the sign. The entry.
Second one is for the entryway. Cause he was, he picked up that, that we were, we were, we were saying how convenient it was to have a project manager.
Right, yes.
Do that. And, and he said, well, I can give you a proposal for that.
Okay, yes. I read this as this was all the rates and then he would put together this. So we agreed to do this last month. He put it together.
Yeah.
This is two separate projects.
And that's, yeah.
Okay. I got you. Sorry.
Okay.
Sometimes I read through these and I think I know what I'm doing. Anybody have any comments or questions on the land survey? We can table it till next month? We can.
Will this, I apologize, I I have this flagged, but I missed it. Um, will this allow nine or eight-one-one to do everything and you no longer need to do the private locate?
Well, that's what the, the add, the add and alternative.
The add-on.
That's the four thousand.
Yeah. Says, we do not expect eight-one-one to efficiently locate all the existing underground to find and mark what eight-one-one will not locate. Healer Web will assist in coordinating this work and adding this information to the survey on an hourly basis. Upon approval of the scope of service, we will submit an RFP for Mason to provide an estimate for additional work.
No, but that's same.
That's saying it's not, it's not a total.
That's not gonna be the total. There may be.
Unless he just went back into his original document, just added that extra sentence.
Who is Mason?
I saw Mason in an earlier one.
Though I could, I could say this is, this is something that we don't have budgeted for this year, but we would have money for it next year. We could just table this for another month because we're not.
Yeah.
Getting started.
Getting user, right.
And I can call and ask him a few questions on it and ask him about the eight-one-one.
It might be a good idea for all of us to look at the launch.
I'll reach out to him.
And then he also sent a note, Adam also sent a note to us about the broken utility cover in the Curz lot, that it is London Utilities and they need to.
I'll reach out to London Utilities. It's in the Curz, the empty lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm starting on the agenda. I skipped. I had this bulleted item in here, but I went back and revised something and I think I must have inadvertently deleted it. Because the, the one thing I wanted us to talk about, um, was the entryway. Because if I have to encumber funds to carry over what we set aside for this year into next year, um, we have to have a contract that's, or a purchase order written up by December thirty-first. And all it gives us is one more meeting.
To do that.
To do that.
Okay.
So I, I sent out the, the three proposal responses. Everybody had a chance to look at them.
Yeah, I looked them over. I just feel like I feel like they all quoted different things. And I don't know how to compare it. But that was my thing. And I'm not sure they quoted what we decided on.
That's concerning.
Yeah.
So that, that's my yeah, concern.
But do you have, do you, does he have a comfort level with any of the three, more so than the other two? And we're, and is that comfort level with one that was one of the lower mid or upper price-wise?
The one that's talked to them.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm asking that question.
And I. I, I did not get much opportunity to be into that. I didn't get any opportunity to chat with the third one. I exchanged emails with them.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah. I guess what stood out to me was Green Sign wanted to use acrylic letters, which I think is a big no.
They looked at me.
Oh, yeah, that'll look, I mean, plastic.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
So all, all three of them probably Bomer more than the other two. They, they were very nice, wanting to work with us and say, well, we can maybe make some suggestions to keep this.
And I, I, yeah, I went through Bomar's, like, presentation and they've done a lot of really very nice work.
Yeah.
So I, I found it, what they've done is very impressive.
The problem is the things they were suggesting to me to keep the cost down were things that I thought were pretty significant changes to the design. And that made me a little uncomfortable. Plus they were the, they were thirty thousand dollars higher.
Yes.
Yeah, than the lowest, the lowest bid.
Yeah.
So the, the lowest bid, they've done the Stone Eater Park signage, um.
Driven by there, but I haven't, not at a rate of speed where I could.
Yeah, that's.
You know, they've worked in this area before. They also seem to be very willing to, to work with us. I.
What's that company name?
So the other thing I did was I sent my sense by, I mean, all of the proposals were looked at by our designer.
Um, right.
And the things that they were suggesting at Stone Eater with, I, I'm not Stone Eater, but the things that Green Sign was suggesting were things like, we'll keep it a little bit smaller. I asked him, you know, what they're suggesting, is that really gonna make that big a difference? He didn't think it would. And he said, I would. He, he said that, that was fine.
Uh huh.
There was a little more question about, they didn't want to dig down for the foundation. There was something about that. That was in my notes when we, when I compared the two of them.
Right, okay.
We have to have some explanation from them about what that.
That footer.
Yeah.
That's what they did. That's not at all, I mean.
No. They've done a lot of nice stuff. Have you looked, have you looked at their website at all?
Yeah, I mean, it was, yeah.
Vacations are so unprepared.
Well, it's been a while. We've had these quotes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but the, um, I mean, I think they're capable of doing it. I agree with you that the Lucite gives me pause and the foundation thing that they were suggesting gives me pause. I think we should drill down on that.
I, I'm not too concerned about the foundation thing, cause they, you you're gonna have to put some kind of footer in there. It's, and I guess I just have to hear from them what they're talking about.
Right, that's, that's.
And maybe they're worried about that water line going through there.
Now, the Lucite thing, if we, if we push back on that and say, no, we, we need to, you know, this was quoted as cut-out letters. What's that gonna do to the price? That might push it right back up in the same area. I don't know without asking. So, um,
Yeah.
I mean, maybe the thing to do is get on the phone and have them. I hate to say, we're considering you, but you know, and I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Supposed to. I guess I'd like to see, I mean, they're giving us this much for a hundred and some thousand dollars and, and I don't see what the materials are.
Oh, does it? Well, but did the RFP have the?
I mean, I wanna. Yeah.
We gave specs.
So they'd have to be.
But I feel like what, what any of them are said, like one of them says bricks and that's not why we chose.
So I asked about that, but that, they've, they're talking about a, a stone. There, it, it's not necessarily a red brick. It could be a limestone brick. It could be a.
Okay.
You know, when they're talking about bricks, they're talking, not talking about red bricks. Cause I asked about that.
But we chose River Rock.
Right, but there's still the limestone panels.
Yeah.
They come in bricks.
Okay.
See, this is a, we use in a cobblestone, stone veneer.
Yeah, that's not what we chose. So I guess.
The, I mean, it's, it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know enough about stone to know.
It's, it's just a, it's, it's not actual, they're not gonna put pieces together. They're gonna put sections of stone. You, it's pretty prevalent nowadays. You don't.
Yeah, I understand. But I think the reason we chose that was so that it would complement the entry to the park.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we put
Yeah.
fake stones or whatever. I, I'm not sure how that's gonna look. I, I just would like to sit, like, I don't know what it is. Like, they need to show me
what.
what they're gonna use. Because this is a lot of money for the town and, and we need to see the pieces.
Do we want to invite them to another meeting and, you know, just to, like, even if we have to meet at like four o'clock someday or two, two o'clock someday, whenever we.
Yeah.
Over the next month before the, before the middle of the month?
I don't invite all three of them.
Well, that's what I think. I think we decide tonight who we want to invite.
Yeah, I'm just like, when I present, you know, my materials to somebody.
Yeah.
They, I show them, I have my samples and I show them the materials and then they go, oh, that looks great or, oh, that's not what I wanted.
Yeah, and I think these people, I think all three would do that. Bring the materials that they would recommend they're gonna use.
Yeah. I mean, or at least bring me a picture that's lifelike.
Yeah.
I guess.
What makes them think that? It says make safe or rework power. What makes them think the power is not?
Wow, I mean, I think they're just the, the, there's power that, that it's there. So they're just gonna, they're gonna make sure it works again.
Okay.
That's all they're saying.
Okay.
Yeah. They would, they would make sure that it meets code.
Okay.
I don't think they're, they're saying anything weird. They're just saying, well, we're gonna do the power too.
Okay, I just thought, what is it that they're seeing that is unsafe or needs reworked or?
I mean, it, it all comes out.
Put that in, so I would hope that it's up to code.
Do you, so what's your recommendation, I guess? You've talked to him the most.
I think.
What's the third?
I think we're kind of required to go with the lowest bidder as long as it's meeting the spec, but in, in a couple of cases, I'm questioning whether they've met the spec. So I'm not sure how to answer that question.
So the lowest.
Lowest bidder is definitely not met the spec, cause they're the ones with the acrylic letters.
Yeah.
Hundred and four.
Well, I would rather pay more and have it done right, the way we want it than to, than to accept something and go, oh, no, and have everybody in town go, that's not what we designed.
Yeah.
So.
Cause I mean, we went through a whole process.
Yes, we spent a lot of time on this.
People.
So if that means, if that means Bomar. So if that means, if that means Bomar. Then I say we call a meeting with Bomar, because they were the ones that quoted it to spec. And say, sit down with us, give us, bring us the material, we'll approve it at the next meeting.
We'd really want a better price if you can give it to us.
Yeah, if you could, if you find.
Suggestions, then I'm all ears.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way I feel. I think if, if Bomar is the one that bid at the spec, and the others use vinyl. Then we don't wanna go with the others. We wanna go back to Bomar and say, let's sit down and walk through this and make sure. We're in agreement with what you're proposing, and at our next meeting, we'll approve it. That sound all right?
If, if we can approve it.
Yeah.
Mid-December and still get a contract put together.
Oh, yeah.
By that time, that's what worries me.
That, that contract will be easy for them. I mean, they basically have the whole thing written. They'll just send us a contract, and we just approve it at the next meeting.
So you're just, you guys' decision.
You guys are okay with that? We'll try to set a meeting here in the next couple of weeks with Bomar.
Yep.
And if it has to be a Zoom meeting, you know, we'll try to set something here, but if you can't, we'll try to do it on Zoom, so.
Where are they out of?
Indianapolis.
Bring.
So this is sample.
Stampers. See when we can get on their agenda, you gonna be a call?
Okay.
It's up to you.
I mean, I, 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 I think it would actually be good for them to start talking with some other folks on the team here, instead of just.
All right. I will call Bomar tomorrow and see what I can schedule.
I do think they were the most, at least now, I'm talking to the salespeople, so I'm.
Right.
Yeah, you know, but he, he was definitely, of, of all the people I spoke to, he was, now, the, the woman from Green Sign was very. Was very communicative too, but he was the one who asked the most questions, floated ideas, you know, was seemed.
Do you have a copy of the Bomar? Is that the contact? Is there a contact on here?
Um, I don't know.
Probably.
It's, it's Adam. I can send you this.
You wanna do that? Just email me the contact info. Okay. We'll do that and try to schedule something probably the week after Thanksgiving. Not, not yet. We meet with Bomar. I wanna make sure what we're doing is right. I hate for them to come back and go, oh, that's not what we're floating.
My only thing is, I saw those are like four feet.
So let's wait to notify them.
And if I was saying, if, if we're gonna give one.
They're like seventeen tall.
To work with us, we should give other companies an opportunity.
I don't think it's. But this is four feet.
Well, I think what we're saying is we've selected Bomar. From the RFPs that all three submitted. Now we're gonna meet with Bomar to make sure it meets spec.
That's seven feet.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
You wanna do that?
Trying to get it in my head.
It's up to you. If you feel.
Not sure what the correct RFP, RFP procedure is, because this isn't like a formal RFP, but we did bid it out.
Correct.
And, and I always thought you're supposed to give all three companies the same information and the same opportunity to. Negotiate or do whatever, but.
Do you wanna meet all three?
I don't care.
Okay.
I just.
We'll meet all three. I'll try and set all three up.
Like I said, I just feel like what I'm reading is. Three different things. And maybe I'm wrong.
And the closest one to spec?
Closest one to spec seems to be Bomar, and they sent this picture and said, this is what we are doing.
That's why.
Nobody else did that. Well, I know, but, but they like.
Yeah.
Acknowledge.
Acknowledge that this is what we wanted, right?
Yeah.
And nobody else did that. So I guess that's what I.
Did the RFP include, like, lighting? I mean, all the uplighting and all that kind of stuff?
Actually did not include lighting.
Yeah, I didn't think it did.
And I'm not too concerned about light.
But, oh, it's pretty expensive.
Well.
We have electrical out there.
Who am I talking about? But having, like, the, you know, the uplighting and so that it, a step. Kind of surprised that wasn't part of that.
It can't be many. There may be two or three on each one.
I know.
How can six bulbs be that expensive? The wiring's already there. Do you think it's any of that?
I remember when we went through this ten years ago, just lighting seemed like it was a big, bigger deal.
Really?
I, I don't ask me why, but it does seem to be that way.
So do we wanna invite all three back? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm, I'm saying that that's the way I have seen it done when we're doing RFPs in the past, that everybody, you know, most government, I mean.
I guess I see it the opposite way. I see you look at all three proposals and you say, okay, this is the one we're gonna go with. Most, this one looks most like what we want, so we're gonna sit down with them and make sure it actually is what we want. But I'm okay doing all three if we can get it all scheduled.
I think if you're choosing them, that we, we are supposed to notify the other two that they're out of the running, but.
We, we will, but we're not, we're not, they're not out of the running yet until we have this meeting and make sure it's the right, it's meets. The product specs that.
I, I've never been on anything where you've had to have an RFP.
Yeah, I mean, yes, so I don't.
This is foreign territory to me.
So we'll, we'll meet with all three. I'll schedule a meeting with all three.
I'll make a phone call to SBOA tomorrow and see if we're supposed to be, I mean, if we're not sure we're gonna use them. And we're straining the other two along until we figure out how much we can get out of one or the other, and I think you have to give the same opportunity to all three companies to say, here's what we didn't like about your proposal. And what can you do to bring it up to spec? But, but I may be wrong about that.
Yeah, that, that would never be, what, I mean, that's never anything I've ever seen. It's, it, when we bid projects. Construction projects for twenty-five years, if you didn't bid spec, they kept you out. And you weren't, and they called you and said, here's your proposal, it looks like it meets everything. Do you have this, this, and this? And you say, yes. Said, I will only, let's send us a contract.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm okay meeting with all three. I don't have any problem. But we're gonna, those other two are gonna have to change their proposals. Which means that, me, means that they didn't, which means that they didn't meet spec when they sent us their proposals.
Okay, so, I'm just, why, why do you not wanna just tell them that then?
We can, I mean, we can, but I, I hate to say that when we may get to them and they say, you know, we decide we don't wanna do it. And then we're back to, okay, we, we need to call the other two anyway.
Square one.
Okay, that's what you're saying.
So I hate to, I hate to, you know, I know they would call us and say, is this everything? And if we'd say no, that they'd be reaching out to one of the other competitors that bid it too. That's why I don't wanna tell somebody no until we know for sure that.
It's a no.
That their bid was exactly what we've asked for.
Okay.
And then I see easy to go back to the other two and say, hey, we've chosen this, their bid was correct. Unfortunately, your spec had plastic signage, and that's not what we wanted.
Okay.
And so, I don't. That's, that was my experience.
Alright. And that's what government works, right? You're bidding.
We've been a lot of government work over the years. But it was, you're, I was also just dealing with the contractors. I wasn't the government actually doing it. I was the con, the general contractor was doing it, and we're kind of the general contractor on this, because we put the RFP in it. But if you check with, you're welcome to check and let me know if that makes you feel better.
I'll check this, and just make sure that there's no issue.
Yeah, we wanna do it right.
Yeah.
Eventually, pretty quick about getting back to me, so.
Okay. Uh, status of security cameras.
Oh, before we do that, though.
Oh.
Do we want to, I mean, maybe we don't, what about, um, using a project manager with this?
Oh.
Ever since, I think ever since, the.
Your own camera.
That's okay. We figured out the security with all the lights. This front light does not work, and then the huge one in between the pro shop and here is not on anymore.
Since we put in the.
That's when I noticed it.
Since we put in the cameras?
And we came back to do the different photo senses, the photo cells and bypass stuff.
Okay. I'll have Setco come out.
Okay, yeah, it's the one right out here.
Okay.
By the flagpole, on the opposite side of the flagpole.
Send me a picture of the two.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Just send me a picture and I'll say, hey Duncan, can you come out with these two?
Okay.
They don't seem to be working at night.
Okay.
Are they on, are they on timers? So they just, so you flip them on and off at night?
Nope, they, sorry, they're, they're on the, they should have been on a photo cell.
Yeah, it should be on.
So whenever these lights come on, they come on too.
Okay, yeah, if you'll just send me a picture of those, I'll, I'll have Duncan come back up.
Perfect.
Thank you.
While they're coming out, the front street light in Steve Smoak's yard's out.
Again?
Mm-hmm.
That's the new one we put up.
I know.
Okay. Man, that didn't last long.
No.
Okay, so the decision was. We've made our preliminary decision. I'm gonna just verify that we don't need to, that we can reach out to them a second time without, you know. Breaking any rules, and we will, we will proceed accordingly.
Perfect.
Now, um, the key to the web proposal for project management of that work, did we want to have a project manager for that? So, did we want to wait a bit to figure on it? I think one of the three vendors said that if we hire our own project manager, there was an off charge.
An off charge.
Well, that was my question, I guess, is, what are, what are they, what are these guys offering?
They're gonna provide to set, they're just gonna look at the construction documents, specifications, and contractor bids for review prior to the time of inspection. Broke a prayer punch list of any items that need corrected, foundation inspection, pictures, and building code, construction practices. Structural material services, grade quality. Four hundred and seventy dollars is not a lot of money.
I mean, I, I think it's a, a good protection for, for us.
I'm okay.
Objective this.
We'll make a motion then to approve.
What do we need to, what do we wanna do that before we actually have?
I think we.
It doesn't matter, because we're gonna, we're just approving to say, no matter what, we're gonna have a construction manager watch this project.
Oh, I mean, I think it's a good idea to have somebody that oversees it, make sure.
Yeah.
You're.
Good with it? Yeah, I make a motion, that'll be.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Yes.
Motion approved, okay. We can send it back to Adam and tell him we'll notify him when we have. And we'll work on this one next moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will reach out to Setco on two lights in the front intro. I cannot believe that thing's not.
While we're speaking about lights, I don't know if anybody's looked, you, you guys don't have access to the app. But one of the things that, because the squirrels stare, is this, that's getting every squirrel in the neighborhood. That's awesome.
I love it.
They're stars.
Uh, yeah, sorry.
He was, he, he said, I can, I can turn the, can turn all the animals off, so it only picks up people and cars. They can actually do that.
Oh, that's funny.
But, um, I said, no, I think I'd wanna know if there's a coyote or a fox in the neighborhood, so I told him, leave those squirrels alone.
Yeah.
With it, yes, they.
Margie said she saw a coyote not too long ago.
No kidding. I think if.
It was on the golf course.
It would be taking care of my neighbor's dogs, because he.
Right. It was, it was down towards Elmwood and went out onto the golf course, so.
Uh, plan, commission, and BZA orientation outcome and next steps.
Yeah, I, I, this is mostly just to get you up to speed, but they, they, they had the training. I've got, I've got the sort of summary documents that they left with us. And she sent me her PowerPoint presentation, so there's that to review, and I also have them recorded. But one of the next steps is I need to go on to the website and build a separate webpage for the zoning. The Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, so that's some of these rules, just like we're doing a simplified version of.
And the forms, was it the forms?
Yeah, so they can access the forms themselves and, and sort of explain it in simple terms.
Are you okay doing that, or do you wanna?
No, I'm fine. It's, it's easy to add a page, but I can, can type it up.
Probably too, before, I mean, as you start that, we need to have that meeting so that we have the layout. And the forms.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, because that's what, we talked about adding the forms onto our website. It says, hey, if you're, if you're gonna build something, you have to have this form. If you're applying for a variance, you have to have this form.
We didn't talk about a deadline for it, but it's gonna be January before I can get started on it, and even then, I'm gonna be doing the annual report in January, so it may be late.
That's fine.
Okay.
And you're gonna send me access to the meeting, so I can watch it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, status of resolution ordinances for public access to records for commercial purposes?
So Bob Plutter's view on that was he didn't think it was necessary. He said, there are plenty of cities that just deny those things, because the, the, the law says you can. If it stated that it was for commercial purposes, so then he didn't think we needed an ordinance.
Okay. And then the other was on the motorcycle, motor, bike, motor, bicycles and scooters. I say we send them what we just got from. Because I, I mean, that was, that was a really big splash in Indianapolis, was Carmel finally, somebody around Indianapolis finally has an e-bike pool.
Yeah.
And my guess is, you're gonna see all the Donut Counties go with that and just copy and paste. Unless, unless somebody comes back with a lawsuit.
Where I saw it was on a Signsville page.
Yeah, yeah, I saw.
And they were like, Carmel did this last night, we need to do it.
Yeah, I saw it in the, on the Indianapolis Star.
To Jennifer's question, though, does Lebanon have one? I can't, nobody's answered that question. Nobody's told us.
I, I, I think Bob, I think we send this Carmel one to Bob and say, can, you know.
I'm sure he'll probably use it for Lebanon, if whoever.
If they don't have it already.
I would say it's probably, unless it comes back to the lawsuit, that, and it, and this, the, everybody around Indianapolis and Indianapolis would probably.
And I think consistency is gonna be the key. I mean, you've seen on the AIM emails. Every town is.
Asking about.
Asking about this. So once, now that there's a roadmap.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be copy, paste, copy, paste, copy, paste.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. New business?
Oh, so the agreement with, um, there was, on the security cameras, we wrote up a, a, a sort of a letter agreement to give to Emily and, um. I guess the board to sign, and Bob okayed that.
Okay.
The only question was, there was a question really for you. He weighed in on it, but it really meant it for you. There's, um.
You remember what the question was?
It was about, uh, ownership.
Here, a letter of agreement.
Yeah, 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 this is it, so. So, um. Yeah, there's.
Three pages, so, front, back.
So the, there's a dark highlighting and, and light highlighting, and there were two options for how we handle this ownership and the infrastructure. So, like the first one says, that all external cameras hardware installed are purchased by Town of Ulan, remain the property of Town of Ulan. UCC will house the system utilizing an existing UCC computer and provide internet access and physical space for the equipment. UCC agrees to maintain the functionality of the hardware and internet service. Town of Ulan will maintain functionality of the added security-related components. And any internal cameras installed by UCC will be their sole expense and remain under their control. Um, or. The first bullet being the same, um, Town of Ulan will donate the upgraded computer components, excluding the cameras, to UCC for per, for the purpose of supporting the shared security system. UCC will house the system and provide internet connectivity and physical space. UCC agrees to maintain the functionality of the donated hardware. And any internal cameras installed by UCC will be their sole expense. So, in one case, we're saying we own that computer hardware, and then.
What was the?
And we're letting them use it. Well, they have to install racks and, and additional hard drive space to store the, the videos.
So they've got a big rack up there. Basically, we put our component in the rack and hooked it up to the internet. So the component that man, that manages the security system is housed in the rack upstairs. Do we wanna own it and maintain it, or do we want to donate it to?
Under, is the understanding that they use it for this?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know what we'd do with it if we took it out of it.
Well, but we retain ownership of the cameras. I mean, I'm just thinking, let's. We could always use those cameras somewhere else, but we, we need the hardware.
Well, you can't, the, the hardware doesn't work without the cameras.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Cameras don't work without the hard.
Right, so yes. Wouldn't we wanna keep?
Ownership.
Ownership of the hardware?
I would say, I would say, yes, I would keep ownership of it and not donate it, just in case. Of a board changeover or something, or somebody, or a new management that comes in and says, hey, you know, why is the Town of Yulin involved in? In this, if we own it.
Right.
Where if we own it and help maintain it. Any upgrades in that thing.
And if we ended up having to change something, at least we've got the cameras and the hardware, and we just would have to house it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know how integrated it is, is it?
It's not.
It's not.
It's a piece you just pull, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a separate hard drive, you just pull the component out. Out of the rack.
The same, and the same. Applied to like the solution, which is if either party wishes to terminate in one phase, we retain ownership of all the equipment. And they agree to give us reasonable access for removal. And any jointly stored footage will be retained for thirty days, unless otherwise agreed. Or. We retain the external cameras, the donated com, computer hardware stays here, and then. You know, that, that was the.
Yeah, I think we wanna own it.
I think we wanna own it, be able to, if, you know, if they decide they don't wanna do it anymore, we can take it and.
Yeah.
Figure out what to do with it.
Agrees.
Yeah.
We're not saying.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. By the way, Bob had an opposite.
Did he, really?
He does. I don't, I don't know why. I, I really wasn't asking for his opinion about it, but.
I don't know.
He might have been, he might have been thinking like I was, that it's integrated into the system, and it'd be more trouble to take out, trying to.
Like, if it was a hard drive that you put physically in a computer, but if you're telling me it's just a.
It's a piece of equipment that goes under their, under their equipment, so they just stack right on top of each other.
We have a rack at work, so I know what you're talking about. Yeah, you just, and, and take it out and use it somewhere else.
Here's another thing to consider, if they decide to put in internal uh, cameras, and they're, they were talking about it on their own. They're, they're gonna be adding to that.
No, they're just gonna be adding to the cameras. The, the rack and the camera system, the hardware is the same. You could put as many cameras as you want on the hardware.
Until there'll be more storage space.
Well, the storage space is only, is it a day thing? So you've got a piece of equipment. That piece of equipment can run, this stuff can run probably twenty-five, thirty cameras if you really wanted to, or more. We, 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 we were on the same thing.
Okay.
And then. That, the only, the only space, hard drive space is what's, the video that's collected from all the cameras. So if they add more cameras, that you may not have as many days of video because you've got more cameras collected.
Okay, we'll go with option eight, we're good, alright.
Uh, retention. Of old town documents.
Okay, yeah, that's a new business item, so. I've got this, I've got. Uh, I found a really great example of a retention schedule, but actually, somebody, somebody built a really nice spreadsheet. I got it from the. From the listserv, and it tells you, like, some things you're supposed to keep for ten years, some, some you only need to keep for three, some you can need to keep for four. But it tells you each type of document and how long you can keep it. We've got a lot of stuff we don't need to be keeping. The question is, do we wanna retain it, or do we wanna start chucking that stuff?
Like, what would this stuff be?
Well, things like old ordinances that are still in effect and stuff like that, you know, I just have to keep that for a long time, but things like emails, really need to keep those for three years. I think we've been keeping as long as we've had Gmail. I don't think we've. Removed anything, have we? Um. Receipts, actually, I think Phil said you can throw away after three or five years, I can't remember, but old receipts you can toss. Uh, contracts didn't have that long, like seven years, something like that. They're all different, but. I mean, it may take a while to even go through. I mean, I might start. With my tenure and go backwards, maybe not do the oldest stuff, but.
I mean, do you feel like we need to retain board minutes from nineteen seventy?
Minutes you do have.
Minutes I would, I, only because I think this theory is of historic value for minutes.
And that, that's actually one you have to keep.
And, and honestly, I think, isn't everything now electronic?
Yeah, but we have all these vouchers. So all these vouchers, are you talking about?
No, vouchers are different than the minutes.
Yeah, but I'm.
But the vouchers.
They say you can toss after three years.
Yeah.
I say we talk.
That kind of stuff I would get rid of, so.
I would say follow the guidelines.
Okay.
Cuz historical stuff's the minutes. And then, if there's any other historical stuff, you feel like you.
So like we have, for example, I brought this up once before and we all kind of didn't wanna talk about it, but there, there. We have this, we have this franchise agreement with Comcast from like two thousand and five.
Yeah, we keep getting checks.
We keep getting checks from them even though the contract has expired.
Yeah.
So we keep that probably, I mean, I think we'll have to use some.
Yeah.
Discretion.
Yeah.
But I think a lot, I mean, if just getting rid of like the voucher things, that's gotta be. Big.
It's my, it's my biggest point.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see any point in keeping that longer than what the IRS requires.
Yeah.
I was worried you were gonna say, I need storage space. And I was gonna recommend your new garage.
I think we still have plenty of room at the storage.
I just. Say that cuz I just cleaned out my dad's place and I've got.
I hear ya. My, my basement's got one whole corner of it now taken over with business, you know, so.
Brothers and sisters are like, what are you gonna do with all that?
That's, yeah, trying to find time. Yep.
Uh. I don't think, a public comment from out there in TV land?
Margie and, and John.
Yes, John's here. Hi, everybody. I just had a question. I had a question, is Monday the last leaf collection?
Uh, it's scheduled to be the last one, but we, depending on if we still have leaves up in trees coming down, we will schedule another one.
We probably need to, we have, we have a two hundred year old oak tree that's about three quarters down, but still has some more to go.
I would say I've got the same tree, and it's two, it's, it's got ninety percent still up there. And I don't think they'll fall over the weekend. So, yes, we will probably extend it and have another leaf pick up.
Okay.
I'll reach out to the guy.
Yeah, also.
Yeah, I still have water back there.
Are you concerned that the, the income is gonna drop because of the, the new property tax law? Or is, is ours gonna drop very much?
Um, it's gonna drop. I can't remember what percentage we talked about. I, John, I have a, I have a.
Six or seven.
Six or seven thousand. Thirty thousand, we were gonna lose.
Six, seven.
That's success.
I mean, I, I guess I'm not real crazy or energized about the signage. If, if that's a place to save money, that, that'd be a place to, to think about.
Well, I mean. That's, that's true, but we have had the money in the bank, sort of sitting there in CDs and such for that project now for a couple of years.
And we, we, we actually build up money every year. So we have, we've not, we are not overspending what we're bringing in. Even with this decrease, I don't think we'll overspend what we're gonna bring in. We'll continue to, we continue to grow that, that just. Uh, for. Uh, projects like sewer systems or something that we're gonna have to do in the future.
And I'm actually less worried about the sewer now that we've learned a little bit about who owns what. So, I mean, that concern. About saving for a big disaster.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, you know, we may wanna, we may have to redo the roads in five years. We may wanna, we may look and say, we wanna redo the sidewalks. Or start redoing the sidewalks so that we, or go in and have somebody come in like Acula or somebody. Level up all the, the sidewalks that are, that have a bigger than two inch gap. And we can, you know, there are plenty of places, I think we have money that we're gonna use to do things, and I don't think that. The loss is gonna. Uh. Be more than we're spending.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Margie, anything?
While we're waiting for her, I wanted to give a big thank you to Brett Klinger and his wife.
Yes.
Who, they put all the reeds up.
Yeah.
I, I came back and, and I'm like, oh my gosh, you're Superman. And he goes, it was a beautiful day. We've got the system down, we just decided to do it. So they did it themselves.
Yeah.
I caught him at the very end. I'm like, do you need help? And he's like, nope, we've got a system and, and we have two more to go.
I saw those up as beautiful.
Yeah, so big thanks to them. That was, that was huge.
Send him a nice letter.
Anything else? Anybody else have any comments or questions on anything?
We were supposed to set a meeting date for December, December.
I think it's the seventeenth, I think what I.
I thought. No, I don't have it on the seventeen.
Cause I.
I can do this.
Set this up with. And there was very few days available left at the club, so I talked with, um.
Emily?
Okay, I'm not sure, I'll have to. Look on that. I don't have everything in my phone.
December seventeenth, is that what you?
Twelve seventeen, six thirty, I assume.
Okay.
Did you have it?
I didn't, I just now put it in there.
Okay. Based on what I just said, cuz let me just double check and make sure that.
If it's different than that, let us know.
Okay.
How's that sound?
That, that, that sounds right, and that's what, that's what Emily told me she had on the book, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
The other, the other, one of the thing is that sometime in the, in the next month or two, I want us to look at the purchasing policy again. Twicken, there's a few things we'll probably haven't, you know, we've decided that. After a year playing with it, there's some things we probably won't change.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna reach out to Boomer, I'm gonna reach out to Setco, and I'm gonna reach out to Bob. Set those, me, meeting with you and I and Deb and Bob.
Right.
And set a meeting for, for that week with Boomer. He said his name was.
Adam Lee.
Adam Lee.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get you right now.
His name, his.
It's got his contact on there, cellphone or. If nothing else, then. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, Emily.
Motion, we're carries. We're outta here.